Okay, good evening, welcome to the April 4th, 2018, meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We have a quorum present, so I'll call the meeting to order. First item on today's agenda is to approve the minutes of the March 7th, 2018, and the March 21st, 2018, Planning Commission meetings. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing known, I'll declare them approved as submitted. We have four public hearings scheduled this evening, first of which is a mandatory referral and right-of-way abandonment to consider the abandonment of our segment of Warrior Drive right-of-way. Matt Taylor is the applicant.
Thank you.
Right when you got a drink of water and everything. Ms. Green.
Thank you. Should I get open my snack first? Our first item under the new business is to hold a public hearing for a request that we've gotten to abandon some right-of-way that was dedicated in 2009 as a part of the Hudson Property subdivision. This right-of-way was dedicated anticipation of the road, and I'm going to use a technical term here, swooping to the south. But you reviewed a revised master plan last year that actually has this road swooping to the north. And so, we've determined that this portion of right-of-way that's shaded blue on the map before you is no longer needed. It is a part of Warrior Drive. It's the part of Warrior Drive across New Salem Highway. And so, most people are probably familiar with the section that leads from South Church Street to Salem, but if you cross Salem, there's this small segment of Warrior Drive, which will extend at some point in the future. So, a plat has been reviewed that will dedicate the right-of-way to the north. The applicant believes that they can utilize this area that was previously dedicated as right-of-way as a part of the parcels that it's adjacent to for future development and to increase their building envelope. Staff has studied the matter and included a report for you. All city departments and utilities were amenable with the abandonment of this right-of-way. However, we did want the ability to maintain some easements that are for utilities that are currently located in that area. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing, but because this does include the abandonment of right-of-way, you will need to conduct a public hearing.
Okay. I don't see Mr. Taylor here tonight, so I guess...
I think Mr. Mulchen is representing him.
Oh, Mr. Taylor's boss.
Rob Mulchen, SEC. As Margaret had talked about, we are just looking at making a correction in regards to the change to the master plan for the Hudson property. So, this is just merely a change in where the right-of-way is going to go. Instead of, like she said, swooping to the south, it's going to be swooping more towards the north, head along the, towards the Stones River on that side. So, we're just asking for that little section of that right-of-way to be abandoned on the front of Lot 27, so.
Okay. Any questions for Rob? Thank you, Rob. Okay, before the public hearing, I'll go over, briefly go over the rules we conduct our public hearings by. When I open the public hearing, anybody will be asked to come forward to the microphone that would like to speak. If you would, come on up to the podium, state your name, give your address, if you would, for the record. Keep your comments to no more than three minutes. If you have questions, the staff will make a note of your questions. We'll try to answer those at the conclusion of the public hearing. All that being said, I'll open the public hearing at this time, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions from members of the Planning Commission?
There are none, I'll make the motion, will you approve?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. The second public hearing is a zoning application, a PCD amendment for Salem Creek Commons PCD on approximately 4.53 acres located along New Salem Highway and Salem Creek Drive Development Management Company LLC is the applicant. Ms. Green.
Thank you, sir. This next item is for an amendment to an existing PCD planned commercial district zone located south of New Salem Highway or Highway 99, and on the eastern side of Salem Creek Drive. And you can see the property identified on the map before you in the colored area, which is indicated as purple on the map. This property was just zoned PCD in 2017 for the development of a commercial development called Salem Creek Commons PCD. You can see that it's divided into three lots, and at that time, it, the property was zoned CF, Commercial Fringe District, and the applicant's desire to put a car wash on the property, and a car wash is not a permitted use in the CF district. So, they debated requesting a CF or a CH zone, which is Commercial Highway or a planned development, and staff advised them to go to the planned development route to provide some additional assurances on the future development of this property. So, they moved forward with that and to get approval from the city council for that PCD. And there should be a program book that was couriered to you called Salem Creek Commons, the amended PCD, and that gives the details of the plan. After getting the zoning in place and entitlement in place, they discovered that the easternmost lot, the one adjacent to the existing Dollar General, is where they wanted to put the car wash. But there is a restriction on that property that gives first right of refusal to the adjacent commercial development, and the adjacent commercial development said, no way to a car wash there. So, because the plan specifically had a car wash on that lot, they need to come back to amend that. And so, this amended book has a few changes. First, the vehicle wash is proposed to be shifted from the easternmost lot to the center lot. Second, because of an extensive sanitary sewer line and easement on the easternmost lot that cannot be relocated, it isn't known at this time exactly how this lot developed. So, the amended pattern book has been revised to eliminate a specific site layout for that lot. And in lieu of that specific layout, it makes the commitment that this lot will comply with all applicable zoning regulations as well as the citywide design guidelines. So, when you look at the program book, you'll see that the two lots on the west do have a site layout, but the one on the right does not. Thirdly, when this PCD was approved in 2017, the citywide design guidelines had not yet been completed or adopted. Existing PCD included, the architectural elevations did not conform to the design guidelines, so they have amended the plan to make a commitment to conform to the design guidelines, which are now effective. And the architectural elevations included in the pattern book have been revised in an attempt to comply with the design guidelines. There's two more, two more changes. Fourth, two uses that were permitted in the original PCD have been, they've decided to eliminate those, and that is department slash discount store and financial services. And financial services is something like a check cashing place, it wouldn't, would not be. And then the last thing is the original PCD committed to the construction of a right-turn lane at the proposed entrance off of New Salem Highway. The amended plan modifies the language in several areas to state that the need for a right-turn lane will be evaluated by the city engineer at the time of site plan review. And city engineering, transportation, and planning staff are in agreement with that language, particularly because the construction plans of New Salem Highway here are a bit unknown, and we believe that TDOT may be eliminating those right-turn lanes. So, we'll evaluate that with site plan, and of course, bring it to Planning Commission for your review and approval. You have a copy of the book in your possession. There's also the future land use map, which recommends this area develop as neighborhood commercial, and the proposed uses would be consistent with that type of land use. If you have any questions, staff will be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing. You should conduct a public hearing prior to making your recommendation to city council.
Okay.
And Mr. Mike Gilbert with DMG is here, representing the applicants.
Hi, I'm Mike Gilbert with Development Management Group. Don't know that I could add anything much better than what staff just presented on our behalf, so we really appreciate that. I'm happy to answer any questions, though, specifically.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, sir. Okay, I'll open the public hearing at this time, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Nobody? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Any other questions or comments from the Planning Commission?
Chairman Lamb, you oftentimes ask about a status update of the reconstruction of New Salem Highway, and Mr. Huddleston has some current information if you would like that prior to your discussion.
Good evening, Chairman Lamb. Members of the Planning Commission, happy to report, TDOT has awarded, has bid the project, they have an apparent low bidder, be working to negotiate the final contract with that apparent low bidder, scheduling that work for start later this summer. It is for the stretch between Interstate 24 and Cason Lane. This property would be in that transition area from where the project ends at Cason Lane to the transition to the existing roadway just west of Cason Lane. We do anticipate work to start there again this, later this summer, and then I think that's about a two-year construction project.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ellison. Any questions or comments from the Planning Commission?
I just have one, and it's strictly an observation, and I know we have a traffic engineer and all that kind of stuff, but before we just abandon the whole right-turn lane, I would just caution that because when certain car washes are successful, or they're a particular time of the year when it's sunny and it's been raining for a couple of weeks, if there's not enough queuing spaces, people are in the, they're in the street parking. You see that on Memorial, and you see it on Clark specifically. So, that's just a comment.
Thank you.
Those are good points, Mr. Halleburton. Any other comments?
Halleburton's exactly right, especially after the salt's been on the road and stuff, and people are cleaning up their cars after a winter event. It seems to be a big pattern. And Church Street as well has the problem out there, so it is a very common problem with, I guess, this nature of this business.
Right.
The, but it does look like a very good use for the property. It certainly fits with the zoning around the property, and it does seem to be a very good project.
Okay. There's no other comments, we're ready for a motion.
Move for approval.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Third public hearing, this is a zoning application for approximately .68 acres located along Cersei Street to be rezoned from RS-15 to residential duplex, George Carrick is the applicant. Ms. Green.
Thank you, sir. This next item is for a zoning application that we received for two separate lots of record that are located along the western side of Cersei Street. You can see them on the map before you, identified in purple area and with a call-out called area. The southernmost parcel does have a single-family house on it, and that's 1327 Cersei Street, and the northern parcel is currently undeveloped and vacant. This property was annexed in 1994, and when it came into the city, it did not have a companion zoning change request, so it came in as an interim RS-15 district, which is single-family residential district. The current uses do comply with that. Just across Cersei Street is more properties owned RS-15, and that's the location of some existing duplex homes. A duplex homes are one lot with a structure that has two dwelling units on it, and those were developed in 1974, I believe, and so, they predated the annexation. So, when we annexed them, they were, came into the city classified as a lawfully established non-conforming use. And just beyond this property is this triangle-shaped property that is currently used as a mobile home park, also zoned, single-family residential, and the use does not conform. Adjacent to these parcels, though, on the western side is the Fountains Development, which you, I'm sure, have been to, maybe to eat or go to the skating rink. It's currently undeveloped and it's city-owned property, which we have actively been investing in redevelopment or into, in development. And then also, at the intersection of Warren Street and Medical Center Parkway is a parcel that you just reviewed last month for a rezoning request. And that was to change the zoning of the property from single-family to MU, mixed-use district. And that, again, is a city-owned property, but we are selling it to a developer. So, this property has a single-family home, it's undeveloped, and does have some lawfully established non-conforming uses across the street. The property owner, George Carrick, desires to change the zone here to RD, which is residential duplex. There is no adjacent or nearby RD zones anywhere near this property, but he still desires to zone it to RD in order to construct two duplexes, one on each lot. We did talk to him extensively about, well, I didn't, but the staff did talk to him about the use and weren't, did not believe it was consistent with our comprehensive plan. Our comprehensive plan identifies this area to be urban, commercial, or mixed-use, an area that's prime for development and redevelopment. In addition to that, this is identified as a sub-area, and it's called the, let me turn my page here, the West College Street Mixed Use Redevelopment Program, and it shows this area and the potential for redevelopment here, and envisions types of multiplicity of uses, including multifamily, entertainments, restaurants, department stores, and other retail, general, and professional offices and hotels. So, we've provided this additional information to you in your, in your staff comments. If you have any questions about it, we'd be glad to answer them. Mr. Carrick, I believe, is here and might have a representative. Do you want to speak regarding the application? Okay. And after he speaks, then we'll need to conduct a public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Green.
You're welcome.
Yes, sir, if you'd like to speak, come on up.
Good evening, my name's Jay Jackson. I'm a lawyer here in Murfreesboro, and I represent Mr. Carrick. Hopefully, each of you, I prepared a letter along with some documents related to our application, and I guess the best way to put it is an argument as it relates to this comprehensive plan. It was me that actually met with staff, wasn't with her, but it was with a couple of other members, when they basically discouraged us from doing it, telling us the same thing. This was not consistent with the comprehensive plan, but I actually read the comprehensive plan, and I actually looked at it and looked at where things were situated in this area, and what was called for in this area. And hopefully, you'll read through my letter, and you'll read through my arguments, but what I found is, is that what Mr. Carrick is proposing is actually extremely consistent with the comprehensive plan on a lot of different levels. The first is that the zoning choice. This particular property, according to the comprehensive plan, shows a mixed-use. If you look at the mixed-use definition in the zoning ordinance, that calls for multifamily residences. What is a duplex? A multifamily residence. It's not the exact same zone that's specifically called for in the comprehensive plan, but you can't really look at the zone, you look at the purpose behind the zone. The purpose behind the multi-use zone is to provide multifamily residential opportunities. The purpose behind the RD is to do the same thing. So, from a zoning perspective, RD is not inconsistent with the plan, and I think the plan is important to the city. It's important that people do things according to the plan, but the plan does not dictate that what's recommended is what has to go there. And so, over time, these plans, they talk about being flexible, they talk about things changing, they talk about, you know, maybe here, maybe we kind of massage this and massage that. You know, I've been over in that area, Cersei Street, Warren Street, that area that backs up into the greenway. I mean, that's going to be a challenge for any developer to come in there, package all those lots together, and put something out. So, what Mr. Carrick wants to do is, until somebody comes in, packages all these lots together, and puts this together, makes a, a deal that nobody can possibly turn down, he wants to actually improve the look of this area. He's going to, we've put some drawings, some, some scale drawings, so it'll show you kind of a little bit about what he's proposing to do. And so, what he's actually going to do is, he's actually going to improve the look of the neighborhood. It's actually, it's going to look better because of what he's doing. What he's doing is also consistent with what's in the neighborhood. She talked about these duplexes. I mean, that whole row that she pointed, it's a whole row of duplexes. It's not just one or two, there's like 10 or 11 in this area. So, the reason they're not zoned, are residential duplexes, because when the city brought it in, they didn't have to do that. They weren't required by law to give it a duplex zoning, they just gave it a residential zoning, because it was a non-conforming use. It didn't matter what they did with it, to be honest about it, they could keep their duplexes. So, what we're proposing is something that we think will help. Not only that, another thing I thought was kind of important is providing housing opportunities. I mean, I'm born and raised in Murfreesboro, only time I've lived away from Murfreesboro was when I was in law school, and the cost of housing in Murfreesboro from when I was a kid to where it is now is just, it's hu, it's just a huge, huge difference. It's very, it's becoming very expensive to live in Murfreesboro. That's not necessarily a bad thing, it's a product of growth, but the plan recognizes this. And so, it specifically states that we need to be careful about making sure that when somebody comes to us with an opportunity to provide good quality housing, that we, we do that. So, we think that it's consistent with the plan in the zoning, we think it's consistent with the plan in providing new, different, and better housing opportunities. What he wants to do is consistent with what's already in the neighborhood, and it doesn't change a thing. If, as staff wants, they think this should be commercial, the multi-use residential never came up during our meetings, they want this to be commercial. I understand that, that's fine. And someday, this may be commercial, but that's not going to be today. That's why this plan goes up to 2035, that's why it's not a 2015 to a 2019 plan. There's time for that, and if that's the way this area develops, it'll happen, and eventually, those lots will be commercial. But until then, why stand still? Why not just, why, what, how does changing this zoning to RD harm any of the goals in the, in the, in the plan? It doesn't. So, we ask you to approve it.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Any questions from members of the Planning Commission? Okay, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. One question, Ms. Green. I think the, it's the east side of the street that has all the duplexes on it, this property's on the west side of the street. Are there any duplexes on the west side?
Immediately adjacent to it, there aren't any duplexes, and this property has a single-family home on it. It is across the street that does have some duplexes.
Okay. Any other questions from the Planning Commission? Mr. Whitaker.
Chairman, a few points that Mr. Jackson made, and by the way, I was one of the ones that he met with, when they come in and talk to us originally about rezoning the property, and he is correct, staff was opposing this when they came in, and for good reason. What we know in the 2035 plan is, this area is going to change. There's no doubt. The city has sold the lot that's adjacent, that fronts on Med Center, it's going to be commercial. The commercial potential here is great. By rezoning this property only adds to the time and cost of the change that we know is going to happen. When it came in, it was not zoned duplex for a reason, because we knew that it was going to change. One of the things that Mr. Jackson pointed out, that things do change. And one of those changes that we know is coming is commercial use, and I'll get into some of those commercial uses in a minute. And he said, why stand still? We're not standing still, we're, we're, basically, the economics will predict when this happens. And as you can see around how it's built up, and it will probably be sooner than later, by coming in and adding new product, it makes it even more expensive, and it's a hindrance to the future redevelopment. And MU zoning is appropriate for this. MU is commercial use, but commercial use is retail, it's business offices. And it is multifamily, but not multifamily duplexes, this multifamily is in multifamily apartments. If it was, I'm not even sure that it allows duplexes, does it, Margaret? So, it doesn't even allow duplexes in MU zoning. So, there, even though it, it's similar, it's not duplex zoning. So, staff opposes it because we know how the city's growing, we know that this will be redeveloped, and it's just not, it's not the best use for the property. And that's why we, there is a zoning entitlement there today for a single-family house that can be built, so we're not taking anything away. He can go build single-family homes on these lots today. We just don't think it's appropriate to add more density to an area that we know is going to change. And that's why we had taken the position we did.
Any comments or questions from members of the Planning Commission?
Mr. Jackson, I've, did you play for the Tigers team, all team, when you were about six or seven years old?
I did.
I've got very fond memories of you.
Yes, I did.
When you were a little sprout.
Yeah.
It...
I hit a home run once, too.
Yeah, and I'm also pleased to hear that you're an attorney, I think that's, I'm proud of you, you've done well.
Thank you.
As far as this, the usage of this property, there currently isn't any RD usage around it, and I think that's one of our biggest challenges, is generally, we try to make sure that all the zoning is comparable when you have zoning that's adjoining it. And the, the usage of, the MU usage, which would be multifamily, is really not duplex, although you're exactly right, there are 10, I'm sitting here looking at it on Google Maps, there are 10 duplexes straight across the street from it. So, it's not that the usage isn't used in that area, but it's non-conforming usage, and that's how it came into the city. I don't think it complies, it complies with what the 2035 plan is, nor does, does it affect that property, but it also affects the entire neighborhood. And I'm not trying to discourage anyone from improving the current condition of those houses in that area, or a trailer in that house for that matter, but I do think that making a significant investment into this property, to me, would, would not be a prudent thing to do, but that's got nothing to do with my decision. I do think it increases the cost of the property when you try to sell it in order to make it reasonable to sell it. So, I've got some serious concerns with the request, and I, I don't think that this, this particular property for this usage would be appropriate at this time, certainly.
Any other comments or questions about the Planning Commission?
I think, at least in my case, I know Gary is being consistent with his decision. I know of other occasions where we had a triplex or a duplex behind a single-family, and they wanted to zone duplex, and he would not let them do it because it wasn't consistent with what was on the street. So, I would have to agree with Gary that if he's going to do it, he has to be consistently when he's doing it, and this recommendation is consistent, what I've seen in the past.
Okay. Anybody else? If not, we're ready for a motion.
I would make a motion to deny the request.
One second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item D is a zoning application for approximately .42 acres located along North Maple Street to be rezoned from residential duplex to PRD, which would be called Maple Nook PRD. Blue Sky Construction is the applicant, Ms. Green.
Thank you, sir. This next public hearing is for you to consider an application to change the zone of property that's just less than half an acre from RD, residential duplex, to PRD, and they've called the PRD Maple Nook, and so, you should have gotten a program book, an eight-half-by-eleven size of Maple Nook, and that's what's proposed here. Blue Sky Construction is the applicant, and they desire to construct two single-family dwellings on one lot of record. So, the RD zone would allow one structure with two units in it, like a traditional duplex by right, but... duplex by right, but they wanna do two structures that are separated, but on the one lot of record. And the form of ownership will be, is it, I'll have to double-check, I was thinking horizontal property regime. And so, as being a planned development, we want to ensure that there's a quality development proposed here, and they've provided, provided some minimum standards. One is that the masonry, the exteriors will be masonry, so that's brick, stone, rock, or fiber cement siding. And then, each unit will have a minimum of two-car garage, and each unit will have a minimum of two bedrooms, and be seventeen hundred square feet. And I'm correct, horizontal property regime is the form of ownership, so they'll be able to purchase the homes, and then the lot will be common area. The page thirteen of your program book has the site layout, the conceptual site layout, showing that this could work. I think it's important that they've designated the architectural style as bungalow or craftsman style of architecture, so that it can fit into that residential area, it won't be one of those homes that I think we've criticized, or some people have criticized Nashville, where the home does not fit the character of the area, so they want these to fit with the character of the area, although they certainly will be newer. Many of the homes are pushed back about sixty feet from the right-of-way, and so, that's not usually ideal in these type of developments. So, we wanted them to go closer to the street, but of course, they couldn't be right against the street, because it, it just would not look right in the neighborhood. So, the setback does have it going back thirty feet, and the front setback typically would be forty feet, so there, the PRD would allow this to have a thirty-foot front setback, and it would allow the five, the side setbacks to be five feet instead of the twelve and a half. I'm gonna invite Mr. Rob Mulchen to come to lectern to go through the details of the, of the PRD. I know he has a, a presentation prepared for you. I do want to tell you that the Murfreesboro 2035 land use plan recommends that this area develop auto-urban general residential character, and that the, the proposed PRD is consistent with the type of development we would see in the auto-urban general residential, and the density is similar to what we would see. So, it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. So, at this time, I'll let Mr. Mulchen go through the details. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing.
Thank you, Margaret Ann. Good evening, Chairman Lamb, Commissioner Rob Mulchen, SEC, here tonight in behalf of Blue Sky Construction to present to you Maple Nook PRD. You can see, the actual property is located on the eastern side of North Maple Street. It's located in a primarily residential area, which is mostly a lot of duplexes or single-family and detached homes. And as we talked about, in regards to the zoning, this is in an RD district or residential duplex. We have RM sixteen across the street, and just a couple doors down, you have an RM twelve located on that side of Maple Street as well. Margaret Ann talked about, we are in conformance with the proposed land use for this area. We are within the dwelling unit range, and we, one of the main components of what the auto-urban general residential calls for is a lot of dwelling units closer together, and I think that's what we're trying to propose with this development, is taking one, one residence and turning it into two residences on one lot, and staying in tune and character with the neighborhood character in regards to architectural styles we're presenting to you tonight. This is the existing home itself, it's about a one-and-a-half to two-story home. This is a view from the North Maple Street, looking back at the house. You can see the driveway on the right-hand side, going to the rear side of the house, where the cars are usually stacked. This is the backside of the home, as you can see, the more two-story element on the backside. Couple views of the homes that are on the property, this is one of the houses just directly to the south of the property. This is the, there are two homes directly across the street, the other side of Maple Street, and this is one of those. And this is the other home that was across the street that was recently renovated in the last year or so, so you can kinda see some of the redevelopment opportunities that have been taking place in this, in this portion of Murfreesboro in regards to the, you know, taking the original style and character of the home, and just really upgrading it to a, a better look and facade element like that, and some other improvements for parking and such. It's a view of Maple Street looking towards the south. And again, this is Maple Street looking towards the north, so pretty picturesque in regards to the overall street character of this portion of downtown Murfreesboro. We're proposing today is to go ahead and take from one unit to two units on this property, so you're looking at, you know, two units on almost a half an acre, so roughly about four point seven, six million units per acre, so like I talked about, that does meet in the comparison for the land use proposed. The homes will be purchased through a horizontal property regime. There'll be two-story homes with two bedrooms or more, looking at minimum seventeen hundred square feet. Then, as Margaret Ann talked about, we're gonna stick with a bungalow or craftsman style architecture to help blend it into the existing fabric of this neighborhood. Each home will have a covered front porch or stoop, that'll be important, you know, to play in with their craftsman or bungalow style of architecture. Both homes shall not exceed the thirty-five feet maximum height requirement for this district. The two garages that we're proposing are actually behind the homes, on that, on the rear side of the home, so there actually will not be any front-facing garage doors. So, all that parking will, any vehicular parking will occur on the backside of the lot, away from the streetscape. And both garages will be shared, we've accessed via a common shared driveway, which will be part of the restrictive covenants for this property. And the garage doors will actually be a complement to the architecture. There's a couple of images of some of the architecture we're looking at proposing. This is, of course, the craftsman-style architecture. Regards to the materials, Margaret Ann talked about, this is going to be solely a masonry-type product on the front side, cyber, fiber cement siding on the front side with some brick and stone accents, whereas the sides and rear will be primarily fiber cement board siding. Vinyl will only be invented in the usual trim and soffit and fascia areas on that side. And any, any accessory structures that may be built on the rear side of this part of the properties will be, will be required to match the architectural character of the main homes themselves. So, at this point in time, the garage is the only accessory on this side, but anything else that may be proposed in the future in regards to a shed or something like that would have to be maintained in that same material type, you know, materials being used on that structure. Again, this is the, more of the bungalow-style type of architecture we're proposing for the, for the property. Couple of views of what we anticipate some of the floor plans may look like in regards to the living space. Like I said, you can see on the fronts of these, each of these units, a pretty decent-sized porch for outdoor living on that side. And again, a lot of the living space downstairs, but again, there will be spaces upstairs for extra additional bedrooms and working space. Another key component, I think, to this is the landscaping. On the front side, we're proposing a six-foot, minimum six-foot wide planting bed on the front side of the home, to really help enhance the architectural character and streetscape for this home blending into the existing character of the neighborhood. And then, along the sides of them, we'll be putting in a minimum three-foot wide planting bed along the sides of the homes, all the way to the back, along the garages there, just to kinda help blend us in with the rest of the surrounding properties. And again, the planting materials we're proposing for this is a mixture of evergreen and deciduous shrub materials, that will help, you know, along with grasses and ground covers, to kinda help really give us a good feel. The front yard will be covered in sod. And we're also proposing on the rear of the lot itself, is more or less, once you get behind the garages, you can see we actually have two extra outdoor parking spaces behind the garages. But adjacent to that, on both of these, we're gonna put a fence down in the middle of the, the backyards, to more or less create two backyard spaces, and that's more or less gonna be a four-foot-high black chain-link coated fence. One of the things I wanted to talk about, we, we came forth with this proposal tonight in regards to renovating this property. Currently, staff is going through an overlay process for the overall downtown district. So, we worked with staff in regards to what we're bringing forth tonight in regards to this PRD. Staff is still a few months away from bringing forth that overlay to you and the city council, but our client was willing to, wanted to move forward with this property at this time in regards to being in character with that overlay district that staff is working on right now. So, we kinda worked hand-in-hand with them to make certain that, we were making certain that we were blending the style of what, what the overall overlay district will be for the downtown area, to make certain we're in, you know, in conjunction with that, when that does come down the line as a point in time. So, I'm available for any questions now or after the public hearing, and I thank you.
Any questions from Mr. Mulchen?
I'm gonna ask, Mr. Mulchen. So, the two styles that you have, are, are you saying that there would be one of each of these, or it could be two similar from one style, and two, you know?
He, my client's proposing, looking at using both styles on there, so it would be one of each on there, so you, you can have either, you know, one bungalow, one craftsman. There's also the opportunity, but he's, right now, that's why he wanted to bring forth both styles, because he feels that it'd be a good thing to have two different styles to put in that lot, to kinda give some distinctive character feel between the two homes.
Robert, I'll tell you upfront, I really like the example A. Example B, to me, just looks like a less expensive product, and, and I'm not saying that it is, I'm just saying to me, it looks like it is. And, and I think the reason for it is, is the amount of stonework and stuff that's used on exhibit, or example A. And I would much prefer, I think it much more fits the character of the neighborhood with the more stone and the more brickwork than it would be if it were an all-siding-type house, because I don't think that really fits with the character of Maple Street. I drove down through there this afternoon and tried to get a good view of all the houses and stuff, of what I thought would be more fitting. And, and to me, I, I just feel like there, I would almost like to have a guarantee on the front of the property, a percentage of it to be either stone or some type of product that would, that would go along with that type intent, because I, I just think there's a significant difference between both presentations that you've given us, or both examples.
I think, you know, I think from my client's standpoint, I think we would be willing to say that, you know, those are just graphic representations, these are anticipated floor plans, but I think in regards to if we went with bungalow style, I think we can definitely feel comfortable with making like a fifty percent, you know, stone or brick kind of contingency on that bungalow style, or both styles in regards to, you know, at least the minimum allowance in regards to a masonry product, other than the hardy siding on that, on that front side. So, that'll give some, at least some architectural trim character, that'll give something that make it feel more blended potentially with the other homes and the surrounding properties.
I wanted the houses to look more like they were built in nineteen fifty, so I didn't want them to look...
Mr. Burns, would you state your name, please?
I'm sorry, Brian Burns with Blue Sky Construction. I didn't wanna make them look like they belong in the Smoky Mountains, like a cabin. I wanted them to, to have that nineteen fifties feel. I was gonna put the, the corvilles going up the, the gables. I'm gonna probably use stone on the foundations, like a stone fireplace, and use the stone as more of accents. If I put too much stone on it, it starts looking like it should be in the mountains or something, and that's not the, I, I don't think it has the feel of, of the, the old houses in the fifties. So, that's, and, and the renderings probably weren't, I don't know, that's the, the second rendering is probably the more expensive of the plans, it just wasn't as pretty a picture, I found, I guess. But I don't mind, I do plan on putting stone on them, I do plan on, these are gonna be pretty high-end homes, they're gonna sell in the four-hundred thousand range.
Mr. Burns, or Mr. Mulchen, whoever wants to address it, my experience with shared driveways over the years has not been that good. Seems like there's a lot of problems with shared driveways, you know, guests stopping off and parking in the middle of them and blocking the way. Do you have something in the covenants that's gonna address that?
We will, but I don't have anything wrote up on the covenants yet, sir.
Okay, you're gonna have something in the covenants pertaining to parking in the driveway?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions?
If this were approved, would the covenants be in place by the time you come to the council, or would it come to the council? Yes.
I can get that done.
It will come to the council.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Burns. Any other questions from the planning commission? Okay, I'll open the public hearing this time, asking anybody to come forward that would like to speak.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Bombardi, and I live at seven eighteen North Maple. So, looking from the street at this proposed zoning change at eight oh four, we are just to the right. And we've been there thirty-one years, and raised three children, two responsible adults. We kind of anticipated with the zoning sign going up, while the sale of the, the home, the auction of the, the property, that there would be change. And there's change every day when you drive around Murfreesboro. Some specific things, well, let me just simply say that I propose keeping the property at RD, a duplex. It allows plenty of parking and not to go with the planned residential. Some of the reasons why, it says a two, a minimum of two-bedroom, and then you start adding people, in numbers of people, so two or three, I'm not quite sure what, I'm not a builder, contractor, or anything, but I think it's important to know how many people are gonna land in this one property. We have a frat house down the, the road on Maple. And actually, since we've been there, it's really been pretty good. But when you bring all those people in, and again, these are, these are more expensive properties, but if you put six, you know, six people in each of these, it gets really tight really quickly. And there's a daycare that, that is towards the back on, on Church Street, that backs up against this with a chain, chain-link fence. So, I see it as a concern, because once it's built and, and, you know, sold, there is the, learning about the horizontal plant, what is it, the HPR or something, that those are sold together, and there have to be, it's a subdivision, that's hence the name, et cetera. So, I'm, I'm sort of learning along the way. The drive is an issue, and I wasn't sure that I had a contractor that we know take a look at it, and they weren't sure that the parking was adequate in the back. Drainage, parking, et cetera. I'm not really sure, I'm not a contractor, but I think it may be, you guys are, and maybe you look at that closely. The, one of the big concerns, I think, both my husband and I have, and, and actually, our neighbors as well, were the exceptions that were put into this. And again, without the, the document in front of me, going from twelve feet to five feet on the sides, it's sort of massaging right into my kitchen. One of the concerns, and I'm gonna bring this up as a, for a neighbor...
Ma'am, would you wind it up?
Who's across, I'm sorry. That's across the street. She went through one of these programs where she had an older home, and it was very costly to heat and cool, and it was torn down, and she had another home built. And at the time, when they were going through that planning, she was told that she, she actually owns the whole lot back to Walnut. And she was told, she wanted to move that house away from the, the street. And she was told, no, it had to be consistent with the homes, you know, that were, that it was next to. So, that was, that was an interesting sort of, I had never heard that before. So, the exceptions are, I, I feel like are unnecessary, and if we took, extrapolated that to all the other plots that would then be developed, you are getting really, really, you, you are dynamically changing Maple Street.
Thank you, ma'am. You're, you're out of time.
Okay, but I have more.
Just wind it up, please.
Can I, can I just?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, or maybe my husband can take my, the next three. Well, I'm gonna, I, I talk slower, so let me just give it real quick. The, one of the big concerns is the thirty-foot from Maple, or from the, the sidewalk. Nobody wants to be looking at somebody's, the side of the house as you're going down Maple Street, and that's what would happen. These houses or homes would be extended much more closely to the, the street, and completely change the, the consistency of the neighborhood. And listening to the planning commission, I've heard a lot of discussion about adding density to the area that will have, you know, that, that you need to prepare for growth. My neighbor Glory Christie said, "Why aren't these guys looking at Maple Street? You have two main venues into South Church and North Maple, into this beautiful judicial center." And I think it really, I think you have to look at what, what that is gonna look like. Again, it's till thirty-five, and, and I think you really wanna be careful about, you know, the things that you can do and the things that you will do. I, I suggest that you don't give the exceptions. I, I suggest that you, you hold the RD duplex and, and wait for perhaps some counselors to purchase those. to purchase those home-
Okay.
-to, as offices.
Thank you very much for your comments, ma'am.
Thank you, and I think that's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else?
If you'll permit me, my name is Ron Bombardi, and I also live at 718 North Maple Street. We're the very next house over. You saw a picture of our house a moment ago. We raise three children here, one of whom played for the Tigers as well in the league, and grew up in the house that we live in now. I think that since you do have this plan that ultimately is designed to increase the density of the city, that our concerns about what's going to happen in Maple Street right there, partly, of course, because we live right next door. But also, if you think about the complexion of that stretch of Maple Street, that's down in the little bit of a valley there, this would push this, these two houses way out, when the ones that surround it are, are much farther back. So, if you do decide to approve the PRD, we would recommend that you do not approve the exceptions to the front setback, because the other houses are setback even further than the minimum of 40, that you would be approving to go up to 30. And, and the spaces between them, to be consistent with the other houses that would be adjacent to it for several on both sides, you know, for, for quite a few houses up and down, that you not approve the setbacks to the side to reduce to five feet, where there's, it's about this much room, and, and you're coming out of the side of your house, and you're right next door to the fence separating you from the other one. And that would be out of sync with the complexity of the rest of it. I don't want to take up any more of your time, I think my good wife took up some of my minutes, but, so if you are going to approve it, we would recommend that you not approve the exceptions.
Thank you, Ron. Anybody else? Anybody? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Ms. Green, what, what are the general setback lines from both sides of existing homes?
Sure, the, the minimum building setback for the property and the two adjacent properties is 40 feet right now. The two homes that you're looking at on the aerial, you can see them look, setback further, they're, they're more than 40 feet, and they've done that voluntarily.
Okay, so the minimum setback is 40 feet?
It's 40, yeah. And this PRD is requesting to be 30, which is a 10-foot difference. This property, of course, is zoned RD, which is residential duplex. An office is not a use that would be permitted in the RD zone, and the density isn't changing because the RD zone allows two dwelling units on this lot, and this plan still has two dwelling units on this lot. But the form they're developed is different, so it's two separate dwelling units that have an ownership where you can purchase the property or purchase the home and not just rent one side. So, the density isn't changing. I will say, there's of course pros and cons to this, and I appreciate, appreciate the Bombardys' comments, especially people who are invested in and care about their neighborhood. One of the benefits of having this application as a plan development is you can have say into what goes here, how it looks, and where it is. With the current RD zone, if they wanted to construct a duplex that's all vinyl, all they have to do is come to the planning department, get, building codes department, get an application. We would look at the setbacks with them and talk about stormwater management, but there would be no review of anything else. And so, with the plan development, the Planning Commission, City Council has an opportunity to review the development type and put restrictions on there if you think they're appropriate. I did hear a discussion before the public hearing saying that on one of the homes that you preferred to have the front to have a minimum stone, and I think somebody said 50 percent, I don't know who said that was, but you can have that say with the plan development. If the zoning were to stay the same, then the staff or, or Planning Commission wouldn't have much input in that. I will say, yes, these, the 30 feet is closer to the street than the two adjacent homes. It was staff's belief that we wanted the parking in the back and not in front of these houses, and most people generally recreate in their backyards and not their front yards. So, in the 70s, 80s, a little bit of the 60s, there was a big push to have large front yards. And there are some benefits to having large front yards, but we've come to realize that they, they aren't really used as much, and, you know, they're just big, people don't sit in their front yards like they used to. So, we encouraged them to design it so the parking would be behind the units instead of in front of them. And that's just a particular style. And you can see that they've divided the, they have two parking spaces behind the two-car garages in the back, and then I don't think, I don't, the 20, the shared drive is 24 feet wide, I'm not sure that there's an opportunity to park in that drive, but if the restrictions aren't in here, they will be in here that require that the garages not be used for storage, and, and that if there was going to be a storage unit, a storage, it has to be in a separate dwelling. So, some of the benefits to this application is that you actually can have say in what it looks like, where it goes, whereas if it were RD, we wouldn't have that opportunity.
Okay. Questions from the Planning Commission?
So, is staff okay with the landscaping?
Yes, the proposed landscape package in this book is more than you would generally get in any other RD, but anywhere, any other single-family as well.
So, does the app can have a good track record of doing what he says he's going to do?
Yeah, we don't always like what he says he's going to do, but he does, but whenever he makes commitments to us, then yes.
Good answer.
But, and of course, as a plan development, we would make sure that happens.
Mr. Burns, would it be, would you be amicable to maybe moving them back just a little, maybe even five feet might help? Five to 10 feet would really help, maybe the concerns of the neighbors there.
I don't think it's going to help much, because their houses are so far back already. And I'd rather keep the larger backyards for people to put, you know, kids and swingsets and stuff in, unless it's just something you guys deem is necessary. I'd rather have them closer so people could have more of a backyard, because I, and I'm not doing, it says chain-link fence, I don't know how that got in there, I'm not doing chain-link fence, I'm doing the ornamental iron fences down through there and stuff. So, I was kind of wanting to make the backyards a feature of the house, because like I say, these are $400,000 homes.
I don't know what the depth of your backyard is on this, it shows 30 feet up to the setback line, but I don't know, it looks like it's somewhere around 50 feet or so. I'm just thinking a few feet, even five feet might help on the front.
I can, we can push it back five feet, if that's what you guys think's best, I'll do that.
It looks like it's, and I'm just guessing, if that's 30 feet, then there's about 20 feet additional beyond that point, so, and what you're giving up in backyard, you're making up for in front yard, and I think a lot of people spend a lot of time in their front yards, especially on Maple Street, I think that's common for me to see people in their front yards. So, personally, would, would 10 feet be okay? I mean, is that going to hurt your project as a whole, do you think, to the point that...
Well, like I say, we're, these are going to be houses that are going to ask $400,000 for, and if I'm asking $400,000 for a house, it's hard to do, you don't have a backyard. And, and there are some duplex, there are duplexes, front-low garages three down from me. It's all, I mean, I don't, this, this street's not all cottage, nice homes, there's a lot of these homes that probably need to be gone eventually, and there's a lot of them that need to be fixed and kept. I enjoy doing both, but I think this is definitely a house, it's in bad shape, it needs to be gone, and I think this is, and we had a bunch of ideas of things to do on this property, and this is kind of what-
All right, I'll back off my 10 feet, if you'll give us five. And the reason I'm saying that is, as, straight across the street, just slightly to the north, there is a house that, that does appear to have a front yard that's very similar to where you're at or close to where you're at, maybe give or take five feet, so.
Five foot won't hurt me at all.
Thank you, Mr. Burns.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd also like to point out, and Mr. Mulchan had alluded to it, that staff has actually got a draft of the downtown overlay. We will be bringing that to you in the near future. Blue Sky decided to, they didn't want to wait a couple of months, so they decided to bring this through. They have worked with us extensively, this is not what we started with, but I do believe what we've ended up with is a good plan. It is consistent with what we will be bringing you in the future. If you remember the Highland study that we did, we came up with four character areas in there. We're taking those character areas for different parts of town, because one size does not fit all. That overlay will give people the opportunities without having to come through a plan development, to come through the expense of this, to be able to go and have some entitlements to go in and do different things in different areas. Donald Anthony, who has actually written that overlay, has looked at this, been involved with it, and it is consistent with what we're doing. So, just to let you know, there's a lot of thought that has went into this, and we will be bringing to this board and the city council that overlay to, because we know that our downtown is going to continue to redevelop. We want it to redevelop in a positive manner, and I think that the applicant has done a very good job of coming in compliance and working with us on this, and you will see more of this in the future, I can promise you. And hopefully, we'll have that done in a few months where people don't have to come through this procedure.
I'd like to see a lot of these older homes along Maple Street, Church Street, and Spring Street, you know, remodeled and improved and, and kept in their basic character, but obviously there's some homes up and down through there that probably do not justify it, and those are the ones we're probably going to see, you know, things like we've seen in Nashville before, tear downs and redevelopments like this, which is not necessarily bad, but we need to have some good guidelines on it, so thank you for bringing that up.
And as far as the parking, you know, they have the garage plus two additional for each one, one of the problems that they ran into in Nashville, they didn't have adequate parking, everybody went to the streets, and now it has become very problematic. We're trying to ensure, if you'll know, on this plan, and another thing we've encouraged people to do are moving closer to the street, getting away from the large front yards. If you go down Maple on the other side, you'll notice the houses are closer, and by pulling those up, the walkability of downtown, you know, it just changes the whole feel, and I do believe there's several homes in the vicinity that you'll see redeveloped. In fact, before this overlay, before I became the planning director, there was a overlay done that would allow people to use the average up and down the street to get a setback, because the setbacks we had years ago were requiring people to push houses back, and it was not in harmony with, with the street elements. So, we've kind of went both ways, but I honestly believe that pulling them up closer is more advantageous, getting the parking in the back, better feel, better look, and trying to preserve some of the history of our downtown. And you'll see that's prevalent in other streets.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I'll finish up by saying, I appreciate the effort the staff has put into this, and Mr. Burns for working with the staff and, and coming up with what I think is a quality product. When you look at it, $400,000 homes are not something that most people are going to buy and turn into a rental property, so I think your concern with duplexes is, is really going away, because this is, this is two quality homes, just on basically what appears to me to be smaller lots than what's traditional down Maple Street. And so, I think it's a very good use, I think it's in compliance with the 2035 plan, and I think it's going to be, I'll hold Mr. Burns to this, I think it'll be an asset to, to your street and not something that deters from it. And with that, I'll make a motion for approval.
And with the five-foot, the five-foot additional front yard?
With the five-foot additional setback, yes.
Okay.
Was there a stone requirement that you wanted to add? No, okay. And then the covenants regarding the driveway, is that the other thing?
I, I think the covenant, I'm not so concerned with the driveways as much as Bob was, but I was more concerned about the garage space that you mentioned, that the restrictive covenants must say that the garages are for car storage and not for any other type of storage, and-
And then the fence that he voluntarily pointed out-
The aluminum decorative-
-should be, just make sure that's, does that right.
Are you getting this motion? And, and I, I don't want to give you a percentage, because I don't want to tie you to something, personally. I, I think that, I'll let you use your discretion, and I'll hold you to it for any time in the future that you decide to use more or less, but I, I do think that, I made it clear early on that I like example A much better than I like example B, so, and I'll drop it at that.
Are you through with your motion?
The end.
There is a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay, that completes our public hearing portion. Jennifer, Ron, thank you very much for coming down and participating in our meeting tonight. Move on to staff reports and other business, we have one item under that, mandatory referral to consider allowing a private utility to cross beneath Cushing Avenue, public right-of-way. Rutherford County Board of Education is applicant. Ms. Green?
Thank you very much. In this application, the Planning Commission is being asked to consider allowing a private utility to cross beneath Cushing Avenue to serve Oakland Middle School. The addition to Oakland Middle School, they desire to use a geothermal system, and originally that system was proposed where you see some of the athletic fields. They now are wishing to put those appurtenances across Cushing Avenue, and as such would like, or need the connection. The Cushing Avenue is a public right-of-way, so it requires action from both the Planning Commission and City Council to approve this section. Our engineering staff has reviewed the application, and with, with the conditions is generally in favor of the applications, the, the conditions that we put on all mandatory referrals is that the applicants provide all the necessary documentation required to prepare and record an instrument, including legal descriptions and illustrations, and that if you do recommend approval to council, that the council then authorizes the mayor to sign the necessary documents, and the applicant is required to sign a private utility crossing agreement. The applicant, of course, is the Rutherford County Board of Education and Rutherford County Government itself. We have representative, do you want to provide any additional information regarding this, or are you just here for questions?
I'm Trey Lee with the Board of Education, Engineering and Construction, I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for coming.
Yes, sir.
Any questions?
Does not require a public hearing, but it does require a motion.
Right. If there's no questions, we're ready for a motion.
So, the setback and-
Motion is made and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. That completes my agenda tonight, unless Mr. Whitaker, or Mr. Ives, or Ms. Green, or Mr. Ellison have something they want to add.
I have nothing, sir.
Yes, sir.
Chairman, I have nothing.
Dilly-dilly, we're standing adjourned.